The work session of March 13th, 2025 is being called to order at 7:30 PM here at Thomas Edison School, 37-01 Fairlawn Avenue, Eugene M. Banta Public Meeting Room, Room 19, Fairlawn, New Jersey. There are two members of the public in attendance. Can I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Baldowski?
Here.
Dr. Bertolini?
Present.
Ms. Brown?
Present.
Mr. Aliya?
Present.
Ms. Faye Belovich?
Present.
Ms. Kasoi?
Present.
Mr. Santana?
Present.
Ms. Yurman?
Present.
Mrs. Mahan?
Present.
We have a quorum.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advance notice of and to attend the meetings of the public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of this act, the Fairlawn Board of Education has caused notice of this meeting to be published by having the date, time, and place thereof distributed to the persons on the approved list, posted in the Board of Education Administrative Office, and sent to the Bergen Record or the Star Ledger. The announcement posting for the work session 2526 budget presentation along with the date, place, and time thereof was distributed on January 24th, 2025. The items we discussed during... We do not have a closed work session today, so we are all set. And can you please all join me in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So tonight's agenda is our 2526 preliminary board budget presentation. At this time, I will turn the meeting over to our business administrator, Danielle Mancuso, and our superintendent, Dr. Dionisio. The floor is yours.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening to our board members and community members that are here with us tonight. First of all, for everyone at home, my name is Rui Dionisio, Superintendent of Schools, and I am very fortunate to be able to present tonight with Ms. Mancuso, our business administrator and board secretary. Tonight, we are also joined by members of our leadership team who are going to be presenting or answering some questions this evening. So we have Ms. DeFranco, our Assistant Superintendent. We have Ms. Beatty, our Assistant Business Administrator. We also have Ms. Keller, our Assistant Superintendent for Education, and Ms. Thai, who is our Director of Human Resources. So as we get into it tonight, this budget presentation is going to represent a commitment to the excellence that we've established here in the Fairlawn Public Schools. And we're going to explore tonight what the budget process has been as we have navigated over the past several months, all of the collective meetings and the collaboration in order to get us to this point tonight. So as we begin, I want to first acknowledge and recognize and thank our Board of Education members for your efforts and the work that you've done, most recently especially with our small budget meetings that we recently had, in reviewing all of the recommendations that have moved forward for consideration for tonight. Out of all of those recommendations that were in those small budget agendas, there are a number of them that are going to be here in this presentation tonight. Similarly, though, there are a number of items that actually didn't make the final cut, and we will be able to have a conversation around those items as we prioritize the needs that are going to have the biggest impact to be able to support our students and to support our teachers in the classroom. We are also going to be able to provide an overview of our current status. We will outline our key priorities. We'll explain the budget development process, and most importantly, we'll show how this budget supports our mission in making sure that we're going to be able to continue with a continuous improvement and making sure that we're supporting all of our students for their success. I always like to start off, you know, with a snapshot of our district to kind of put things in perspective, to really show exactly what the scale and scope is of the work that this Board of Education, the administration, and our faculty does each and every single day. We are over 35,000 residents. We are one of the largest school districts in Bergen County, if not in all of northern New Jersey. And that's not to be taken lightly. It is a very large community. But the beauty is that has a very small, close-knit feel, as you all know, being community members and residents here. We have almost 1,200 faculty and staff across 10 different schools, and our mission, of course, is to promote continuous improvement and high levels of learning, to foster self-confidence, and to support success for all of our students. So tonight's presentation objectives are going to be laid out, as you see here in front of you. We'll discuss our current budget status and the projections. We will discuss the areas that we've identified as opportunities for potential adjustment. We will talk about what the critical funding needs are and how that has evolved a little bit this year compared to years past. We'll talk about the long-term financial sustainability considerations. So that's specific to the decisions that we make today as a Board of Education, how they have long-reaching and longstanding impact in future subsequent years. We will talk about how we actually attained proposing the balanced tentative budget in front of you tonight, and what that process looked like. And as you all know, the actual final budget adoption is on April 24th, 2025, next month. This evening is just a presentation on the preliminary budget, and there's actually no board action tonight. The purpose of tonight is to provide an update to the board on the progress over the past several months and the recent small budget meetings. And then in addition to that, be able to have some rich discussion and conversation, answer any questions the board may have. And on Tuesday, March 18th, we will actually be presenting the budget for preliminary adoption next week. So balancing our needs. I love this quote from Winston Churchill. It's not about having enough resources, but it's about how we use the resources that we have. And if this year taught us anything, is that it's even more important to really analyze our resources and identify how we're going to employ the goals and the initiatives that we have, at the same time being fiscally prudent and responsible to the taxpayer, and seeing how we can continue to evolve our school district. So a couple of key points that are here on this slide that I believe are worth noting. The first one is the reduction in state aid that Fairlawn experienced this year. So you see there that the reduction is almost $700,000, and that's significant to consider. And the reason it's significant is because over the last five or six years, Fairlawn has benefited from an increase and getting closer to fully supporting the state funding formula by the state of New Jersey. So there have been several million dollars increased year over year, over the past several years, which has allowed the school district and the Board of Education to maintain a very low tax levy increase. We believe that this year, we're presenting a very fiscally responsible tax levy increase to the Board of Education that we'll talk about later, but a major consideration was certainly paying attention to that reduction in state aid. As we all know, we've talked about it a number of times, continues to be at the top of our list, making sure that we're adjusting and being nimble to the growing and fluctuating school enrollment needs, and that varies year to year, at our elementary schools especially. So making sure that we have strategies and an approach in place to address that, making sure that we're addressing our aging infrastructure that requires maintenance in our buildings. Our buildings are old, but we continue to invest in them, to make them current, and bring them up to date. And Ms. Mancuso will walk us through some of the upcoming projects later on this evening. We have numbers of rising costs across different areas, specifically special education, specialty areas that are unique, and as well as a teacher shortage. We all have talked about not only teacher shortage locally, but nationally, and how that impacts, you know, basic economics within hiring practices in school districts. The impact with our increased health benefits costs and other insurance costs. We also address the technology infrastructure needs, as well as our mental health and security initiatives. We will talk a little bit tonight about the limited tax capacity impact. That's that tax levy increase that the board is able to go to. And we will also spend a little bit of time talking about the current banked cap that exists, and when that expires, and how the board can in future years decide if and how they want to utilize that. This slide here talks a little bit about what our budget development process overview is. There's a lot of analysis that goes into the budget process. I just want to, I'd be remiss if I didn't thank Ms. Mancuso, our school business administrator, Ms. Beatty, for all of their work in preparing for tonight. It is a Herculean task that did not start last month. It started about six to eight months ago. There's a lot of coordination that goes into that with the rest of the business office and the support staff, meetings in the fall in order to analyze and assess where we're going, what we're doing well, where we can further sharpen our pencils, being able to collaborate with all the building supervisors and the administrators, and getting feedback from our schools and departments in order to be able to have our planning meetings in December, to then be able to build and prioritize needs to go before the Board of Education in February, and then that ultimately brings us here tonight. What you'll see tonight is some maintenance of and retention of the strategic investments that we've maintained over the number of years here in the school district. Specifically, the items that you see in front of you are the continuation of really important initiatives, specifically here. Mental health and district-wide school security initiatives will continue. We also have opportunities for further enhancement that we can talk about this evening. The continuation of enrichment programs across the district, K-12, continuing to support the New Jersey student learning standards across the state of New Jersey, and that impacts and influences our curriculum, and supporting our one-to-one technology and interactive classroom panels, like the ones that you see here on the walls this evening. In addition to those items, we also will be able to discuss the addition of new staff that are going to be recommended due to enrollment or specific special education requirements and needs that we have to support our students. We will talk about maintaining the existing staffing and school year programs. I will also be able to discuss tonight areas where we have fiscal efficiencies, areas where we'll be able to actually reduce our current existing costs in order to make sure that we provide enough resources to be able to evolve and address some new emerging needs. Continuing with cybersecurity and our internet redundancy to make sure that we limit when our web services go down, supporting Achieve-NJ and Teach-NJ law that impacts our instructional and certificated staff, and continuing to support our resources for required assessments, such as our dynamic learning maps, access, NJSLA, AP tests, et cetera. The budget that you'll have tonight will also support enhancing literacy screeners and resources specifically around DIBELS. We will be recommending the increase of new textbooks, specifically in science, grade seven and eight, and also in grade six in vision math. We also have, as part of our regular cycle, and making sure that we have current textbooks, updating through textbook renewals. We have several courses there, specifically in our social studies curriculum, as well as our math curriculum. We have resources and program renewals that are part of this existing budget. You see Linkit, BrainPop, iXL, Common Lit, No Red Ink. No Red Ink is a program that we've recently piloted in the district and are continuing to expand because of the positive feedback that we've received. And summer opportunities. So we have summer opportunities this year for our middle school academic academy and for our Fairlawn High School in-person summer school program. We'll get into that in a little bit more detail later. In addition, we have supporting our staff development. You see a number of different initiatives there, from MTSS to supporting our multilingual learners, strategic investments for our student success, also support our assessments, specifically the support and remediation for NJGPA. We are also adding the addition of the PSAT next year for grade nine students. We currently support the PSAT in grades 10 and 11. The introduction of the PSAT in grade nine allows us to not only help acquaint, acclimate our students to the SAT, but also specifically to be able to collect important data that will help us drive further identification of students for AP potential. So there's a direct correlation there to be able to support our students and then be able to identify which students will find success in advanced placement courses. You see a number of other initiatives here, fine and performing arts. We are adding new middle school kilns for next year. It's time to update those. It's been a number of years, and they are due, as well as additional supplies. We're going to be able to continue with our focus groups, which is transition programs for our students as they enter the middle school from grade four to grade five, and to ease in that transition. And similarly, the continuation of focus between grades eight and grade nine as well. And then last but not least on this slide, the continuation of our mentor training induction program. Very, very proud of the work that Fairlawn has done for many years. That goes above and beyond supporting our new teachers, beyond more than just the first year or the second year. So it's a comprehensive, very intensive support program for our teachers, and that's something that's commendable that the district has done for quite some time. So here is a slide that I want to draw everyone's attention to. You'll remember, a few moments ago, I talked about fiscal efficiencies and where are the areas that we can prioritize in order to make sure that we can find some resources within our existing budget. So responsible budgeting requires finding the efficiencies without compromising quality. And these are some of the areas that collectively we've received feedback on where we're going to tighten our belt to be able to make some of those adjustments. So we have building-based subs throughout our school district, which are really important in all of our schools to be able to fill vacancies when we have shortages, and we support different programs and different initiatives within our schools. But we're going to scale those back a little bit for next year in order to be able to realize $135,000. We have both in-district IT technicians in our technology department, but we also outsource through shared service that we pay for through Bergen County tech departments, special services. We have three contracted outsourced technicians, and we're going to be reducing that down, realizing a savings there of almost $265,000. As the board knows, we've had some conversations around after-school enrichment. As far as after-school enrichment goes, that's something that has previously, prior to this year, been funded by federal funds. Moving forward for next year, that is being funded out of the local tax levy, out of our operating budget. That cost is about $65,000 for that after-school enrichment. In addition to that, we had staff coverage to help support the transition for the past few years, where our district staff would help with the transition of the students after school in order to be dismissed to their parents. That's a $35,000 cost. We believe that we can alter our processes to make sure that parents understand that the instructors for those after-school enrichment programs will be responsible for the dismissal of those students. And that's something that the parents would agree to, would have to agree to for their children to participate. That's quite a common practice. That would save the district $35,000. Just to draw everyone's attention to those first three items, the increase in the number of building-based subs that we've had over the years, the Bergen County shared service technicians and the after-school enrichment, all was more or less post-COVID. So as a result of that, with receiving the ESAR funds that came in from the federal government, we had the resources combined with the increase in state aid over the past few years. As a result of that, you'll also remember, it was not too long ago, but it feels like a long time ago, considering, I think, yesterday or today is the five-year anniversary of when COVID actually hit, right? Coming back to school a year later was very different, was very different in our schools. We didn't know if we were going to have enough substitutes in the buildings. We didn't know how much tech support we were going to need. So we really, all school districts, including Fairlawn, really had to expand the support network, which is what you use those federal funds for. Fast forward a few years, we're in a new normal now, right? And we're going to hope we're going to continue to stay here. So as a result of that, we feel a high level of confidence that we can move forward with making these adjustments at this point in time. We also have anticipated breakage of approximately $200,000. Breakage is a fancy term for those of you who don't know, and the members at home, for when we have staff members who are retiring or resigning, and they retire or resign at a certain salary, and we hire somebody at a lower salary, that's breakage, right? So those are realized costs that we can put back into the budget in order to repurpose otherwise. We also are going to realize some savings with the grade seven and eight science renewals, a one-year term versus a three-year term, and the same for Algebra I and Algebra II renewals. So you'll see a $65,000 and $92,000 savings there. As a result of that, just to explain what that means, similar to, you know, other contracts that even in our own personal lives, if we go into those contracts, we may be able to realize a bigger cost savings with a longer contract. On a one-year term, you'll be able to realize some savings annually, but it will cost us more over the term of that three-year contract, but it allows us to balance the budget. Now for the additions. So as a result of that fluctuating enrollment that I talked about earlier, Radburn Elementary School is one area where we are going to require adding an additional teacher. We had one grade level that even over the summer last year, just over the summer, we had about eight or nine students move in over the summer in one grade level. So it pushed the class size close to 25, and 25 in some of those areas. So adding an additional teacher at that grade level for next year will allow us to bring that class size down to about 20 or 21. School counselor at the high school. Our caseloads at the high school in grades 10 through 12 are around one counselor to 250 students, and we want to bring that number down because we believe that by having a smaller counselor to student caseload ratio, we'll be able to provide more personalized support for our students. In addition to that, it will allow us to gain parity between our grade nine counselors and our grades 10 through 12, to be in that 1 to 2:10 ratio. And what it also allows us to do is anticipate future enrollment at the high school to be able to maintain that low student to counselor ratio. Behaviorists, we have a new behaviorist position that we are adding in district, full-time. A little interesting circumstance here, though, because you see a column there called "Offset." We currently contract for $76,000 a year the behaviorists with an outside provider. So that is only for certain number of days, which is not a full-time position. By bringing in a full-time behaviorist, it allows us to reduce our caseload for our behaviorists. It also allows us to offset some of that cost. You see, the true cost to the district is only $49,000, and now we will get a full-time employee five days a week. So we'll be able to kind of build our bench a bit deeper and be able to reduce the caseload for our behaviorists and provide more personalized approach for our students. The data entry support position is at the community school. This position specifically is offset mostly in part by some of the funds in the community school, which is a self-funded program. So about 75% of that is funded by the community school, and we'll be able to... This individual will allow us to be able to support all the different initiatives and the demand, not only within the community school, but with residency and other required initiatives across the district. The individual currently is already working about 26 hours, so it increases the workload to nine hours for them per week, and the individual already has health benefits, so there's no added health benefit cost. So it's a nominal cost that you see there. And as I mentioned, part of this is funded by the community school outside of the operating budget. And then the item down there on the bottom one here on the screen is a teacher of science, a teacher of students with disabilities, ICR, in-class resource. This is, for those of you as educators, a two-teacher co-teaching model within the classroom. We are also similarly going to be doing this in social studies and being able to phase this in year over year. So we're very proud of this and student services, and thank you, Ms. DeFranco and the team, for being able to bring this initiative forward. This is going to be really important to support our students going grades nine through 12 over the next three to four years. And similarly, unrelated to the budget, we're looking at with the middle school schedule in future years, how we're going to also be able to do ICR in grades five through eight. We have breakfast monitors that Ms. Mancuso, I'm sure, will talk more about later on. That utilizes the cafeteria fund, so there's no impact on the budget. Common ground is our parent evening orientation for transition to our middle schools. So this will provide some resources to be able to pay our teachers to come back after hours, to be able to support that initiative. And also, another wonderful enhancement, year two of this actually, is expanding upon our Unified Sports. Unified Sports is our athletic program for our students with disabilities, and we're really excited to be able to bring on bowling and track in addition to the Unified Sports that we brought on last year. And you also see paraprofessionals here to be able to support our students in those two athletic programs. And last but not least, before I turn it over to Ms. Mancuso, we have a behaviorist salary adjustment is a recommendation that we are bringing forward to the Board of Education in the amount of $16,000. We want to make an adjustment, and the reason we want to make an adjustment is because an analysis of our current behaviorist salaries, they are far below what the competitive rate is in other districts. That's concerning because we want to make sure that we're competitive, that other districts do not have the opportunity to go take our talented staff to be able to go to other school districts. It is not uncommon for some of these individuals who we have lost in the past to go make tens of thousands of dollars more. This allows us to be a little bit more competitive and to be able to continue to grow our support services in special education. And then you see the reading labs in ELA for both middle schools, and that is to support our students' Student Services Department, to be able to provide additional reading support for our students with disabilities. And the total proposed staffing costs that you see here at the bottom increases $495,000. Okay, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mancuso.
Okay, so the first thing we'll be discussing in this portion of the budget presentation are the capital projects and equipment. You will see that we have a, there's a painting of large spaces in all of our elementary schools, which was prioritized. I'm sorry, actually, I think we have to go back a couple slides here. Okay. So we are going to start off with our secondary schools, excuse me. Our proposed projects for the 2526 school year were developed in collaboration with all of our building principals, our Director of Buildings and Grounds, as well as the Central Office Administration. In addition to the recommendations provided by the principals, the district has recently completed a facilities audit that was used to prioritize projects relating to the health and safety of our buildings. Some of these projects that you'll see are not very attractive, such as sewage ventilation or paving, but the upkeep of our infrastructure- but the upkeep of our infrastructure is a crucial part of maintaining our district facilities. Some projects that will affect the overall staff and student environment are the faculty room renovations, the B-Gym bleacher replacement at Fairlawn High School, and the childcare playground replacement, as well as various painting projects. Projects at the elementary schools have a large focus this year on painting and lighting to enhance the overall environment of the school. Last year, we really started chipping away at routine maintenance items that we can fund through our maintenance reserve. So that has no impact to our general fund. These things have a very large impact on the aesthetics of our schools. This went over very well with our community last year, our staff members and students. So we are going to continue to fund that initiative for this upcoming school year. Projects that are particularly centered around health and safety include the milling and paving of the parking lot at Westmoreland, stairwell renovations at Forest, the fencing at Lyncrest, and the replacement of the playground at Milne's Elementary School. The painting of large spaces in our elementary schools was prioritized, and you'll continue to see that theme over at Warren Point and Radburn Elementary School. There is a specific emphasis at Warren Point to replace the gates that are currently around the school, specifically to enhance security due to the location of Warren Point being on Broadway. The preschool classrooms at Thomas Edison will be renovated with new cabinetry due to the condition of the existing casework. And there will be a minor office renovation with two administration offices for the purpose of housing our technology team all in one area. Lastly, we'll be doing some routine maintenance on the chimney repairs at our Bergen Ave. building. And we'll also be purchasing additional custodial equipment. Last year, we really began an equipment replacement initiative. And the equipment pool, it doesn't impact our general fund because it's embedded in the current custodial contract. Lastly, we're just going to discuss the ROD grants that you heard us talk about last year. Our ROD grants were budgeted for and approved in the prior, well, actually, the current school year for '24-'25. We were able to bid those projects in the fall of 2024 to ensure that we can, that they can be completed during the summer of 2025. So the days of us being able to budget a project and get it approved in April and then complete it by the summer, those days are long gone now. We really have to plan very far in advance due to just the lag on the equipment, the price increases. So it's very, very crucial that we budget for a project now that we want to see done in, not this summer, but the subsequent summer. Additional capital reserve projects that were prioritized as a result of the facilities audit include the Milne's window replacement project, our Radburn HVAC project, and the additional plumbing, HVAC, and electrical projects that are just miscellaneous projects that we have to do throughout the district. Now for the part that everyone has been waiting for, we will dive into these very intriguing numbers. Revenues have been outlined to display the summary of funding sources that the district receives. The district is proposing a 3% tax levy increase due to the 3% reduction in state aid. This increase aligns with the inflationary expectations as well as the continued educational needs of the district. The district was eligible to increase taxes above the 2% cap due to the large increase in the health benefit premiums. This is also known as a healthcare waiver. Our other state aid category is comprised of two sources, which are the extraordinary aid and the non-public transportation aid. Historically, we have budgeted very conservatively for X aid as it is an unrestricted revenue source, meaning it has no specific use and can be used to fund our capital reserve. We are now using more of that X aid to fund our general fund. Semi-projections are provided by the state, and they must be included as a revenue, even though it seems like a de minimis number. The decline is due to a 20% reduction in eligible costs that is being projected for next year. Fund balance are excess funds that are used to fund future budgets or reserves. Although this appears as a decrease, in the current school year, we made a $4.6 million deposit to capital reserve, and $4 million was used to fund the current budget. So this has actually remained flat. Our miscellaneous revenues have increased by 50% due to budgeting more of the interest that we are earning on our bank accounts and a small increase in our special education tuition students. And lastly, we'll discuss our reserve accounts. Our withdrawal from reserves are down due to the ROD grants that have been budgeted for in the current year. So once we pull those funds out, we don't have to budget for them annually. They just continue to roll over to future years until the projects are completed. Now we're going to do an expenditure overview or an appropriation overview. The instruction category primarily consists of contractual salaries for teaching staff as well as purchased professional services, such as substitute cost. Supplies for our programs and textbooks are also budgeted within this category. New items that account for the increase are the Radburn Elementary teacher, increases to supplies and software licenses, as well as an additional lease payment for our Chromebooks. Student support services primarily relates to special education and related services. This would include salaries for our LLD, ERI, and MD teaching staff, and Camille, I know exactly what all of those acronyms mean. Related services consist of our paraprofessionals and therapy specialists, such as OT and PT. Changes to this line include contractual salary obligations, adding a new high school counselor, and increased speech services. Our out-of-district tuition line has primarily remained flat with a small reduction due to a decrease in charter school enrollment. Our next category represents salaries for central office staff, which includes administration and support supervisors, principals, and technology staff, as well as various professional services, such as legal and architectural services. The decrease in this line is attributed to the reduction of contracted technology staff and also a reduction in internet cost due to utilizing e-rate. The difference in our operation of maintenance is actually due to the SASSO field turf and track project, which we actually budgeted for last spring, and it rolled over into the current year. So the net difference is about $500,000, not the $1.6 million that is being reflected in the adjusted budget. Our transportation category includes the salaries of all of our transportation department, including administration, drivers, and bus aides. This is actually the first year since 2020 that the CPI index for transportation services has been reduced. So last year it was at a 5.6%, and this year it's actually only going to be at a 3.6. It doesn't seem like a lot, but it's the only relief we've seen since COVID. Employee health benefits, including health and prescription, have increased 17% this year. The state health benefit plan runs on a calendar year, not a school year, so the district has to absorb half of that cost in the proposed '25-'26 school year. Because of this increase, that is what made the district eligible for the healthcare waiver to go above and beyond the 2% cap. And as Dr. Dionisio was explaining, the community school is actually a self-funded program, which means that the increase of these expenses is being offset by the revenue that it brings in. So increases in this program are due to, actually, the program offerings, salary increases for before-and-aftercare employees, as well as camp employees, supplies, and transportation cost. And in summary of the revenues and expenditures, this slide represents the total overall increase of the general fund, including Fund 12, which is our capital outlay and projects, with a total of $1.5 million or 1%. To give a visual representation of the figures we just discussed, $97 million of our budget is dedicated to contractual salary obligations and employee benefits. So that's 97 million of the 138 that you saw that is already spoken for. $500,000 has been dedicated to hiring recommended staff based on high priority needs for the district. This budget also dedicates $4.6 million to capital improvements and security projects. This budget represents a proposed tax increase of 1.60% or $122 annually. This estimated tax increase is based on the average assessed home according to the Average Residential Assessment Report. The next part that we're going to talk about is something that Dr. Dionisio referenced, and this is what we call savings or banked cap. So every year that the district does not go up to the 2% tax levy, the funds that are generated, they're given to the district, and we can use them for the next three years. If the funds go unused, then they expire. So in '26-'27, we'll have about $1.8 million that will expire. In '27-'28, we'll have about $1.5 million. And then in '28-'29, we'll have $160,000. So the reason for the small increase in '28-'29 is because we have gone above and beyond the 2% in this current year. As we talk about this proposed tax increase, it lends itself to also consider the amount of state aid that the district was receiving. From 2016 through 2020, the district received relatively low state aid increases, with the exception of 2018. This has a direct effect on what the district proposes in terms of a tax increase for any given year, as you can see. From 2021 through 2025, school year tax increases were all below 2%. And you'll see that there were significant increases in state aid over that period of time. Our proposed tax increase for the 2025-2026 school year is in line with the average tax increase over the past 10 years and correlates with the trend of state aid as we received a reduction of 3% this year. Lastly, we just wanted to point out what our budgetary per-pupil cost is. So this information is derived from the user-friendly budget. It is the advertised per-pupil cost calculation. These are the districts that are categorized in Bergen County as K through 12, and they have 35,000 students or more. So in conclusion, I would just like to thank Dr. Dionisio, Melissa Viti, and the administration for all of their hard work. As Dr. Dionisio mentioned, we have been working on this since November 2024. It's already a new year, and it's really an honor and a privilege to work with such an amazing administrative team. They are all such a great support for us. And we are very happy and excited to present this budget to you and support the students of Fairlawn.
At this time, what we're going to do is we are going to open it up to the Board of Education for questions. And I wouldn't say discussion, but I would say questions. So what we're going to do is...
I'm going to make a point of information.
Sure.
Our agenda actually provides...
Public.
...the opportunity to do that with the public going first.
First.
And then the board, because we specifically have a public comment and board comment on specific discussed agenda items, and this is our only agenda item.
Perfect. Then we will pivot. Thank you.
This portion of our board meeting is specifically for comments on resolutions listed in tonight's agenda for the public. When speaking, please state your name and municipality of residence. Specify which resolution you are addressing. There's only one. Limit your remarks to three minutes. State law prohibits board members and administrators from discussing personnel matters, student discipline, or other confidential issues. Please note, this is not a dialogue or a Q&amp;A session between speakers and the board. While we may not respond immediately to or every comment tonight, all input is carefully considered and helps inform our decisions. Responses may come through emails, reports, board statements, website updates, or after the comment period closes. Thank you for your participation in our school community's governance. The floor is open.
Christine Weinstein, Fairlawn. Thank you so much for this really great presentation. I know how much goes into this type of stuff. So I really appreciate the details, all of it. It's really very well done. My questions are around ESY. And with all the repairs in the buildings, if any of these repairs are going to disrupt where we have ESY, because I know it's already been approved of where it is. Also, the roof of the high school, is that... Do I understand that's a project for the following summer? Because that was kind of... My son had his roof fall in on his classroom. So I was just curious if that was going to be a project that could be bumped up, or if it's just a patchwork-type thing, or how that's going to function. But thank you very much for great information. Thank you.
Google Doc?
There are no comments there.
The floor is closed. I will now open the floor to comments from board members. Ms. Yerman.
I was just wondering if we can just go back one slide.
Thank you.
So I'm going to interrupt you really quick. We are going to take all questions, and then I will have Dr. Dionisio and Ms. Mancuso answer all questions from the board and all questions from the public altogether at the end. That way, it doesn't, we don't engage in any other conversations. Want to hear everyone, just in case everyone has something elicits in another question. So we will answer all of those at the end.
I can continue? Oh. So one of the questions that I have that obviously won't be answered with this budget, but something to keep in mind. The residents receive from Glen Rock Community School and Midland Park Community School about courses. And I was wondering if we can look into using it as a shared service that they... Because everybody's looking for a certain population for certain courses, and that if we use it as a shared service, we might be able to save some money on that. And then my, and I should have started out that was amazing presentation. Great job. Explained everything. And I just have a question about, that I brought up in a small committee, but I just want to make sure that any playground that goes in is handicap accessible. And I'm not sure I understand what poured rubber means. So I just need a clarification on poured rubber. And thank you very much for the couple of playgrounds that are going to be refreshed with new equipment. Thank you very much.
Dr. Bertolini.
Thank you, Ms. May. I'm just going to have a hard time trying to make a comment in the form of a question. So I will, comments are acceptable?
You're absolutely welcome to make comments. They're actually board member comments.
Okay, thank you. But as a Jeopardy fan, I would probably be able to do that, so. I first want to thank the business office, Melissa, Danielle, Superintendent Dr. Dionisio, and everyone in the central office, all the administrators that are here, and all the staff members that have spent a lot of time. I know the process does start. They're not exaggerating when it really starts in, pretty much in September, maybe October, but certainly very early. And now this is the result of a lot of work for a lot of hours. So I do want to thank them. And also, I want to make a statement that we can all find things we don't like in this budget, some things that are missing in this budget. But this is a very difficult year with the increase in health benefits having a significant impact on every district's budget. And that's just on Fairlawn's. So again, I want us to look, it's a very large packet. It has a lot of things in it, very positive, some things you may not like, some things you, there's one thing I don't like, I will not bring up. But I did not like, but I will not bring it up tonight because this is a very large budget. And I think they've done a great job in getting to the point where it's good for the taxpayer, it's good for the students, and it's good for the school community. So thank you all. What is?
Ms. Kasoy.
Thanks so much. Also, this was really informative and interesting, and I'm learning a lot very quickly. If I could just get a little explanation of what the Bergen Avenue building is? I just wasn't familiar with that. So if you can just touch on that real quick, that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Ms. Havelich.
Thank you so much for the presentation. I'm so excited that we are finally getting playgrounds for our elementary schools, something that I've been advocating for, for a number of years. So I appreciate that the administration is hearing me. So I appreciate that. I have a couple of questions. As I was looking at the budget, and I'll tell you the section, I was a little confused. So if you could clarify it, I would really appreciate it. If you go to Section 10 of our book, Page 2, it says the summer music enrichment is going to go down by 35... is going to go down by 35%. I was wondering if you could elaborate why it's going down, if possible? I also... It's Section 12, page one of our book. If... It says support service school administration went up by $164,000. I was wondering if you could also explain what that means? Another thing that I felt... Got a little confused as I was reading the budget is... Am I going too fast? No? Okay. If I'm going too fast, let me know, because I talk fast. Section 10, it says learn... If you go to Section 10, let me see the page number. Oh, it's the first page, so that's an easy one. It says the learning disability decreased by $700,000, which is 28%. The autistic program went down by $65,000. The behavioral disability cost went down by $24,000. I was wondering if you could please explain what they really mean? Because I'm sure maybe it's just moving from account to account, but it's... So I understand. Then it says also that the support service administration increased by $247,000. If you could kindly explain that? What else did I... I was wondering if you could... If you kindly could let us, the board, know which projects will be done by our in-house versus not in-house? If you could please kindly explain that? Oh, and then I'm also trying to understand, is the budget, the improvement plans based on the new long-range facility plan or the old one? Long-range facility plan? If you could kindly explain that? And then in our budget, it says the increase was 2.67%, and then during the presentation, it was 3%? I was wondering what changed from the time we received our budget book versus what when we had the presentation? Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
First of all, thank you for the presentation, but also thank you for the compilation of this entire budget binder that came to our homes last week. Some light reading for the weekend, I appreciated it. More of just some highlights I want to start with is just to clarify that this is the first time in a decade at least that we've had a decrease in state aid. I just want to make sure that was correctly articulated, especially for our community to recognize that. And with health benefits, just to confirm the increase of that. Excited to see the addition of a school counselor. Extremely important to get those ratios down. That's something that I know the board has been committed to insuring over the past couple of years, so it's great that we're still working towards that incrementally. And then just my two questions that I really had was the breakfast monitors. The addition of those through the cafeteria fund, kind of just wanted to understand the long-term sustainability of that coming from the cafeteria fund, where those funds may be exhausted within a few years, where we will fit that into the budget long-term. And the build-in-based subs, just wanted to clarify whether we were reducing that or eliminating that structure in a way, and if we have... If it's... Will be fine with the current subbing structure that we have coverage. But those were my only two questions. Once again, great job, and thank you.
Ms. Brown.
Again, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for this detailed budget booklet that we got in the really cute bag. And the descriptions that you gave... This is my second budget go-around, and it's less overwhelming... It's still overwhelming, but a little less so this year. I was, you know, being on the board for a year, I've been able to understand things a little bit better. I did have a question about the sixth-period stipends in the budget. I just wanted to... I, you know, I appreciate giving all of our educators an opportunity to earn extra money in something that they're passionate about that benefits the students, but I was wondering if maybe it was more cost-effective to hire another teacher versus doing that, if we could save there? I wasn't really sure. And then I just wanted to make a comment on the teacher, the co-teaching science component. I just wanted to thank Camille for hearing us. We've been discussing that for a year in depth in multiple small committees about supporting our high school students, specifically in a co-taught model in Science and Social Studies. And, you know, I definitely want to see that grow more, and I just really appreciate you listening to the community and listening to us. And, you know, starting that in grade nine, it's a great start, and I hope to see that grow into the other grade levels in the future.
Ms. Kasoy, I'm just going to wait for everybody to have a turn. All good? Mr. Santana? That's just not what our practice is. So everyone gets a turn first, and then once everyone is done, all good, we will circle back for an additional three minutes. Mr. Santana.
Thank you. Don't start a minute yet, please. First, I would like to thank Dr. Dionisio, Ms. Mancuso, and Ms. Beatty, and central office staff for your hard work on the budget. I believe the community has the ability to pay this increase. It's about 1%. We have people literally lining up to rent homes in Fairlawn. We have people bidding over $100,000 of the asking price to purchase homes. We have the ability to pay the 1%. But just because we have the ability to pay it, doesn't mean we want to pay this increase. I fully support... I fully support the recommendations of the superintendent. However, I have a few comments and questions. Can we switch health benefit providers, given the huge increase many districts are facing? I do support the discussing insurance services, which I brought up, the community school. I believe that the district owns... We own land on... We have a... We own a piece of land about a block away from the high school. It's open space, we're not utilizing it. I believe we should sell it and offset our costs. This has not been brought up, and this is a way to offset the increase. Maybe not this year, but next year. It's a piece of land sitting and not doing anything, but we can make money of it. Land is very, very expensive in Fairlawn, and I believe that will offset the taxpayers' I would like to know why the window replacements are so costly, and if we are getting competitive pricing. I assume we are, but I just wanted to know if there's not that many providers? Why is the cost so high? Can you provide the job description for the data entry support position? I do support having more counselors at the high school. This is something that we have been wanting for many, many, many years, because a lot of parents have to pay out-of-pocket for private counselors when they are preparing for, you know, planning for college. The breakage, Dr. Dionisio, should... And I believe you probably agree with this. The breakage should not stop us from finding the most qualified person for the job, regardless of the experience and the educational background. So even if it costs more money to hire someone to enter the district, if that person is the most qualified, we should hire them. And I would go the second round, because I'm not even halfway.
Mr. Ilya.
First off, just to echo, thank you, Dr. Dionisio, and sorry, Dr. Dionisio, Mrs. Mancuso, and Ms. Beatty for the effort in this PowerPoint. The first-time board member, definitely easy to understand, even having the book beforehand, made it a very smooth process. That's the first thing. And then my second thing was I'm excited to see all these projects on the budget for building and grounds, definitely to improve the image around the district. Looking forward to the end result. I was also happy to see the teacher of science and disability on there for science. I think that co-teaching model rolling out. To echo, Ms. Brown, thank you, Camille, for that. And I think that'll be... I hope it's successful. I hope it continues to be over the years. And then just my question was just a similar one that was said in the public with how would the projects affect ESY? And then definitely supporting that, that increase for behaviorists, because seeing the job that behaviorists do every day, it's definitely difficult, so I'm glad that that got added on to the...
Ms. Kasoy.
Thank you. There was a lot in here, so I'm not sure if I missed it going through the first time, but as we're looking at additional counseling support for the high school, has any thought been given to... I know that we've structured a little bit into bringing a counselor and to specialize with the ninth graders who are coming in. Has there been any thought given to a counselor who will specialize for the 12th graders who are applying to colleges? Because that has become a more cumbersome, confusing, challenging process for students moving forward. So I don't know if that was addressed earlier, if it has been addressed, hasn't? Just if any thought has been given, again, as we're trying to specialize some of that counseling support at the high school, if any thought has been given to setting up. We had a college counseling center with, you know, big books when we were... But now, I mean, everything is a little bit different, and with all the new digital ACTs and all these things, just to kind of help guide some of those, the students in 11th and 12th grade as they're moving through that process. So just a question. Thank you.
Ms. Yerman.
So two, two questions. One is to tag on what Joe said. The question I have is how many permanent subs do we have in the district? And then how many are going to be taken, are taken out of the budget through, I guess, attrition? Or not? And then the second part is the summer school program? And I think I'm asking about the whole summer school program. What would be the cost share between the district and the students and the family? So that's the question, like what the cost share would be.
I'm just going to clarify that. Do you mean summer school or extended school year?
Summer school.
Thank you.
Well, then let me... Can I just ask? I'm kind of making this assumption that ESY is... There is no cost share.
There have been a lot of redevelopment in Fairlawn. A lot of new buildings, a lot of new homes being built. You know, we have to educate all of our children. Our population is increasing. We have to hire more staff, have more resources. There's more rent there in the building, so this is unavoidable. The investment that we're making on our children, and it's a great investment. But there are consequences for the ever increase, increasing of the population and overdevelopment in town happening. It's about, I calculate about 20,000 per room for the cabinet and countertops at Edison. That's quite a lot of money. Why is it so high? That's one question. I do believe, I agree with my fellow board member, we have to stay competitive and keep talented staff. So we're going to have to do a lot of creative thinking to offset a lot of this competitive salaries. Great job, Superintendent and business office with the, with the creative thinking applied to the behaviorists. I cannot believe that we spend more per people than Richwood. Richwood is a wealthier community, but we spend less than them, which means that we should spend... We probably are spending a lot more than what we should. Okay? So you don't have to be a math genius, you know? We're spending probably a lot more than we should. A 1.8 increase, that's, that's a miracle. I don't know how Dr. Dionisio and his staff was able to come up with such a, such a low increase for so many students that we have. And so it's a miracle. It's not higher. And I do believe, I do believe the students who failed the high school and have to attend summer school, they should have some skin in the game. It would be like an incentive for them not to fail, and an incentive for them to attend summer school. So I would like to request and ask for support from the board that they pay, because taxpayers are on the hook. We have to provide a thorough and efficient education to our children, according to the New Jersey Constitution. A thorough and efficient education should not be also to have the taxpayers on the hook for summer school. In addition, it's too much. So I think they should pay the tuition for summer school for failing the classes in the summer. That would be an incentive for them to do better and to attend, and that will give some, some breathing to the taxpayers. So we have to put our children first, but we also have to be considered to the taxpayers. Thank you.
Ms. Velveche.
I just have three more questions, and I promise I'll stop. Maybe I am wrong, and I correct me if I'm wrong. So when we had the auditor come in, she said we had $50 million reserves in various accounts, meaning savings. So I was wondering if you could tell us, how much does currently does the district have in savings, which is their reserves in various accounts? If you could please kindly say that? Another thing is, I wasn't understanding this, that we have debt service. Debt service, as much as I understand, again, correct me if I'm wrong, I could be wrong, it's on referendums, and that's the referendum for the high school and for the TJ. But it, in 2022, it went, stayed, stayed the same, and 2023 stayed the same. But then in 2024, it went down? Then in 2025, it went up? So I don't understand if we borrowed the same amount. How did it keep fluctuating? I would think they would stay the same. Again, I could be... And the last question is, one of... Actually, two more. One of the board members talked about poured rubber. I was wondering, is it going to be like a Burden Park where it's some poor rubber, some mulch? Or is it all poor rubber? If you could please clarify that? And the last thing is, I thought it was wonderful when one of the board members stated that about having a counselor dedicated for going to college, and they will be able to help with college essays, with how to apply. I think that would be actually excellent.
Thank you to our administration. I don't have very much to say. I really appreciate the information. You definitely made our lives easier with these budget books and this presentation. And you see that not just from our more seasoned board members, but from how much easier it was for both Mr. Ilya and Ms. Kasoy to manage, as well as newer members, and very brand-new for Ms. Kasoy. So thank you so much for that. I just wanted to note that I was really appreciative of, one in particular, as a board, we've been asking about registrations and possibility of re-registrations and looking into that. So I was actually really excited to see that there was an increase to full-time for this data entry person, because now I can keep asking for that and ensure that it's done, because we have a full-time person who can help with that. And because that person was already receiving health insurance, it really was very nominal. And there is so much that goes on at the community school that I think... so much that goes on at the community school that I think that would be really beneficial. And then regarding the after school enrichment, thank you so much for keeping the funds that go directly toward the classes. The one thing I just wanted to note is that I wonder if there's a better way we can ensure that our students get an equitable opportunity to enroll. Right now, because those funds are now coming out of our primary budget, is there an opportunity that our students who receive free and reduced lunch or have an additional need get primary spots, and then the rest is left to our lottery? Because more often than not, sometimes people aren't available when those slots open. And, you know, someone's job may not be as flexible, or they're working on a weekend. And then our students who have the need and would benefit from these after school activities and enrichment, and would be able to better utilize it than other people in our community, because like Mr. Santana said, it's not that we can't all pay, it's that we shouldn't necessarily have to. But there are people who would much more benefit than those who may have the means. So I'd love to see that we really refocus and reestablish how that process goes to ensure that our students who require or may be in more need of this socialization and who may have more limited funds, and then what's left would be a lottery. And then lastly, I love all the ideas. Dr. D'Onizio and Ms. Mancuso have heard me say this over and over again. I think before we start specializing in school counselors at our high school, we need to refocus on what our mental health supports and school counselors look like at our elementary schools. Every single child should have the opportunity to access a school counselor. And I'm really looking forward to seeing that in the 2627 budget. Thank you guys so much. And with that, the floor is closed. I will now turn it over to Dr. D'Onizio and Ms. Mancuso to answer any and all questions. And it is, and I'm going to give, I'm going to try and alleviate a little bit. So Bergen Ave is, it's our hidden gem. It's actually a really gorgeous building, if you haven't been over there. It's where our transportation hub is. Well, to me, that's still transportation. All of our building grounds, transportation, if you go down this road.
To Bergen Ave?
To Bergen Ave. Go check out just the outside of the building. It's like an old schoolhouse. So cute. What? I know, it's an old schoolhouse. Yeah. I'll go with you. But it is our buildings and grounds and our transportation hub, and that's the only question I can answer. So now I'm going to turn it over to Dr. D'Onizio and Ms. Mancuso. I could probably talk about, I could probably talk about poured rubber, but I'm out.
Thank you very much, Ms. Mahan. And thank you to the board. Those are, first of all, thank you for all of your support again. And thank you for the great questions and comments and discussion points. So I believe the best way to do this is Ms. Mancuso and I are just going to kind of go back and forth in the order of the questions were presented to be able to kind of address these points. So as far as the question from member of the public regarding E S Y and summer programs, what we typically do every year is, depending on where our summer construction projects are, we shift E S Y. So there will be no impact, aside from in certain areas, being able to shift and communicating that well in advance to all of our parents. And just since the topic of E S Y, and just to reiterate for the public, Ms. Yurman had asked a question that I'll get to later on regarding cost of summer school and cost sharing. And there is no cost to E S Y for our students in E S Y. Thank you for the comment regarding community school, regarding Glen Rock and Paramus. We're always looking to see in regards to shared services, where we can kind of increase and expand our efficiencies. We are going to be having some preliminary meetings coming up with our shared service committee, with Mr. Santana as the chair, and with the members of the committee in advance of being able to meet with the Fair Lawn Borough. As it relates to our playgrounds, playgrounds will be ADA accessible. And the poured rubber, and this goes back to the question of Ms. Faye Velovich also asked similarly, is in relation to, it will not actually be rubber mulch. It will actually be poured, solid surface, rubber flooring that will be on all of the playgrounds. And that in and of itself also contributes to the ADA accessibility for all of our students. Not only be able to access getting to the playground, but then being able to effectively move about the playground for people who need ADA accessibility. We addressed the Bergen Ave comment, question. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Mancuso to kind of address some of the questions that were in the budget book related to some of the specific areas around those accounts.
First and foremost, Ms. Weinstein, I would like to proudly let you know that the Fair Lawn High School roof is being repaired this summer. So that project was bid in, I think, back in November. I don't know, it's all a blur. But we actually are already under contract, and we have already started our pre-construction meetings. And I just want you to know that I do understand how important that project is, and it was prioritized due to health and safety. You're welcome. I'm just going to kind of roll through some of these. So Ms. Faye Velovich, just because your questions are very specific, I would just like the opportunity to follow up with you on those, just so that I can go back, review those increases. It's a little hard to do it without having everything in front of me, but I would be happy to follow up with you. The one, a couple of the questions that I can answer. So in-house projects first contracted. So my in-house maintenance staff will be doing all of the faculty room renovations. They will be doing miscellaneous painting projects. And they also will be installing the cabinetry for the classrooms here at Thomas Edison. And they will be doing that room transfer for the two administrative offices, for the data support and the technology office. So hopefully, Mr. Jobs is not listening now and hearing that very long list. And then for the L R F P, so the long range facility plan, that is a plan that we approved, I believe it was back in 2021 or 2022. And that plan really encompasses a very general description of the projects that we need. So for example, it may say that we have $20 million in HVAC repairs. So everything that we proposed in this budget is also included in our long range facility plan, even the playgrounds. But the facilities audit is a much more detailed description of the exact projects with the exact estimates. That's all been updated to reflect the current economic environment that we're in. And we obviously build in a lot of contingencies, so those numbers are inflated, but it's just much more specific. And we used the facilities audit to prioritize projects that are going to be completed this summer. And then for the 2.67% and the presentation, so in the presentation, we were only talking about the general fund. So when you only talk about the general fund, because that's the only fund that you're allowed to increase taxes on. So that's where you have the 3%. When you look at your budget book, that includes Fund 40, which is that debt service you referenced. So then you're just kind of, that's the net impact. It's also the school year versus the calendar year when we talk about tax impact, which always just happens to be confusing, right? I like to talk about the calendar year because that's how your taxes are actually collected. I just want to go back while I'm on your questions, if I can just go back to, if there was anything else that I can answer right now. Melissa, I believe you have the capital reserve balances. I have that somewhere, but if you can pull it up for a second. And for your question on the debt service for the referendums, that was very intuitive, actually. And it's, you're completely right. So the reason why it was fluctuating is because in some years, we took a, an amount from capital reserve, and we paid down our bond debt. So what happened was last year, we got a nice increase in state aid, and we didn't have to take a decrease. And we didn't have to take any funds from our capital reserve to offset the tax increase. So we only had a tax increase last year of $20. This year, what we did, because we lost state aid, is we took another $500,000 from our capital reserve, and we paid down that debt, so that it had less of an impact on the taxpayer in this proposed budget. But you are right. Some years, it was a little inconsistent, probably based on the state aid that we received. Some years, we took some money from capital reserve to pay off debt. Some years, we didn't have to. I did do that again in this proposed budget. We talked about the rubber mulch, so that's great. Sorry, I'm just going to scan through these to see if I can. Melissa, do you want to talk about just the reserve balances for a moment?
So at the end of the audit for capital reserve, we had 28 million. At the end of this school year, we'll have about 32 million. And with what we're projecting in this future budget, we will have about 27 million. Now, that's not including any resolutions that we can do in June to make a deposit from this budget into the reserve. Okay? For the maintenance reserve, we ended the last year with 4.4 million. With what we took out for this school year, it should be about 2.3 by the end of this school year. And with what we're projecting for the budget, by next year, it'll be 1.2 million. But again, that's also not including any deposits we make into that reserve in June. And for the emergency reserve, we ended the school year last year with $607,000. With the activity that we had in this school year, we took out some money, so it's going to be about 432,000. And with the activity that we're, the funds we're taking out for next school year, it'll be about 282,000. And again, that's not including any deposits we make with the June resolution.
Thank you, Melissa. I do want to transition to Mr. Baldofsky, because you asked about the breakfast monitors, which I actually, just where they were in the presentation, I probably didn't explain that to the full capacity. So we are being required by the state of New Jersey to implement a breakfast program for all students next year. So in order to do that, we, because of our free and reduced population. So I believe, I'm sorry, Melissa, 10% or 20% for next year? I think, yes. So if every, if you have 10% free and reduced lunch in that specific school, you have to offer breakfast to those students. Next year, that'll be all of our schools, with the exception of one, but I wouldn't leave one school out. So what that means is we have to offer it to our free and reduced students, but then obviously our regular students, they'll have the option to eat breakfast as well. So if we go back to when the auditor was here, she spoke about the balance within our cafeteria fund, which is over $3 million. So we will have, we hope that that'll sustain for as long as we kind of needed to, depending on, you know, then we might implement teacher coverage or have to work something out within our negotiated contract when those funds fall off. But I think we should be good to implement that program at least for the next five years. And then the building base subs, I'm going to try and answer this, Ms. Ty, but I might have to toss it to you. I did spend a lot of time with Mrs. Ty, so I hope that I do it justice. Our building base subs, we really ramped that up for coverage during COVID, and it's really a credit to Mrs. Ty, and she works very closely with E S S. We have, I think, a 98% fill rate, or maybe it's 94%. So we have an incredible fill rate here. So we actually have so many subs that we get just through our normal recruiting process that we feel very confident that if we reduce a few subs, you know, where we probably increased during COVID, that our fill rates won't suffer. So that was discussed with the principals. It was discussed with Mrs. Ty and also our E S S consultant.
I could just jump in on that one as well. In relation to district wide, we have currently this year, 25 building base subs approximately. So it's about a 20% reduction. So the team feels confident that while there will need to be some adjustments operationally, that we can end up living with that now, because we are several years past COVID, and we're in a good position for that. As far as questions, Ms. Brown had asked a question related to six period stipends. So that's a really great question and an interesting one, because it really does depend. And it depends on the subject and how difficult it is to find a replacement, right? So you can imagine in like specialty areas, niche areas, it may be more challenging to find that replacement. So if you already have staff members on hand, on staff, you can tap into their expertise pretty quickly. It will also depend on when the vacancy is available. If the vacancy becomes available over the summer, and you have time to fill that replacement, then for a full time equivalent, a full time staff member, that makes the most sense. If it's in the middle of the year, that makes it a little harder. So sometimes we have to actually fill in the interim, in the short term, that six period assignment. In addition to that, it really does also depend on exactly how many sections do we need. Sometimes we only need based on student enrollment. And we see this more at the middle school, but really primarily at the high school level. We may only need like an extra section or two. So it doesn't warrant a full time position. And then I would say the last variable is health benefits. We would prefer to have a full time equivalent teacher in a classroom. But you have to recognize that every time you put a five sections, which is full time, into that classroom, then that also triggers the health benefit cost. Now, that's a cost that, as you could see, we bear, because that's essentially the cost of doing business, right? That's all encompassing of the compensation package. So it just really depends. Wherever we can find some efficiencies, we do it. But as you can see, we decided to go with a full time behaviorist and take advantage of that offset from the contracted service. So the cost that you saw up there also includes the health benefit cost. So it's the going market rate plus the current health benefit costs that we have in front of us. I'm going to ask Ms. Mancuso to speak to Mr. Santana's question regarding that health benefit provider question. And that was around the increase in cost. This is something that Ms. Mancuso has talked about previously. And I think it's a really great question to discuss here as a whole board. It is something that the business office has looked at regarding what the healthcare providers are. So I'll let her speak.
And if I could just touch on a couple other of Mr. Santana's questions as well. So for the state health benefit plan, since I joined Fair Lawn about two years ago, I have been consistently paying for our claims history through the state health benefit plan. Last year, the health benefit broker that we currently have in place, they were not satisfied. We shopped the plan privately with Horizon, Aetna, Cigna, and they were not satisfied that we only had one year of an improvement in our claims. So I was denied through all those plans, and I wasn't able to pull us out of the state health benefit plan. This year, I was bright and early in requesting my claims history back in November, and we did not receive our claims history until February 20th, 2025. Obviously, I would assume that the state is very behind with getting people their claims, because everyone is trying to pull out of the state health benefit plan. This usually hap, I mean, it happens when we have year after year of these massive increases. So right now, we have received our loss ratio, and we are currently shopping that plan. I will be providing the finance committee with an update. Of course, we always want to make sure that anytime we are talking about transitioning a healthcare plan, that we really involve all the necessary people. So that would mean that we'd have to meet with our union leadership. We want to make sure that that plan is equal to or better than what we're currently offering. We also want to make sure that we can give webinars and provide, you know, a great updated website with all the resources that our staff are going to need to be able to transition that plan seamlessly. But it is something that we are definitely on the ball with, and we are working towards as quickly as we can. Additionally, you had just asked about sharing a job description with the community school, and I did just want to share some of the historical, the community school data position. I wanted to just share a little bit of the historical side of that position. The community school, they were running short
The community school, they were running short-staffed, um, since about 2020, so they used to have 2.7 employees. Um, and then they went down to 1.75. So, they have done a great job with making do, but we have seen a substantial increase in our before-and-after-care program since post-COVID. I think probably parents might have been reluctant to send their kids to before-and-after-care, and now we are far past that point. Uh, so, we really believe that this person will not only be assisting with the before-and-after-care registration, they'll also be helping with the absent management because this type of employee can be transient, it's part-time, there's issues that come up, so they'll be, definitely be helping with that. And then, as we have all spoken about, we would like to research, um, the reregistration, at least the specific grades of fourth, uh, when, when people move from fourth grade to fifth grade, and then again, from eighth grade to ninth grade. So, we definitely have to do our fact-finding and gathering and talk to other districts who have done a reregistration. Um, I definitely want to see if part of that can be online or how we're going to, um, initiate that process. But I do think that it's crucial to give our director of the community school the adequate support they need to have a really good process in place. And I did think, the last one that I think I can answer is just, um, the window project. I just wanted to emphasize that those are budget numbers, so they are probably overinflated just because of what we're seeing with construction right now. And I do want to just emphasize that the capital reserve money, we, it does not affect the general fund, so none of that impact was, you know, resulting in a tax increase. And if those numbers come in lower than what I budgeted, the remaining balance of that goes back to the capital reserve. So, I always find that it's better to over-budget versus under-budget because if I don't use it, it just goes back at the end of the year, and it's not impacting what our taxes cost to the community. That's all I remembered off the top of my head, but if there's anything else. That is the reality of furniture right now. And we are going to install those ourselves to save on the labor. But if you like, I can absolutely walk you through rooms one through four, and you will see that they are in dire need of being replaced.
I'm not doubting that, that the items are needed, but I'm just, uh, concerned about the cost. I know in, um, I believe in, uh, I think it's Nor, North Bergen, I think it's room 109, they sell cabinets for $10,000, a whole kitchen, wholesale prices. I'm just concerned, $20,000 for one room, it's a lot of money. It's, it's a lot of money. I'm just, I just want to know if, you know, a lot of, we could get a, a, a better rate.
Yeah, we'll definitely, absolutely take that into consideration. We always get multiple quotes, we try to use co-ops where we can, and that is just a budget estimate. So, we, we definitely hope that that'll come in lower.
For my, uh,
Mr. Santana, I'm sorry, just because it is our policy, we do not engage in a back-and-forth, so if you have additional questions, feel free to ask them during other business.
As it relates to some of the other questions that I have here from the board, one of the questions that came up, um, was in regards to the high school, uh, school counselors. And we've had a lot of success this year with the introduction of the freshman counseling positions, two of them. So, out of our counseling team, we now have two freshman counselors who've done a great job of really personalizing the transition to, uh, Fairlawn High School. And with the addition of the other counselor positioning at the high school for next year, uh, if approved and once approved by the board, you know, when we go and hire new staff, we're always looking for diverse backgrounds and specialties. We don't want counselors to have all of the same experiences. Um, so, we, we really look to make sure that we have a good, broad experience. We're always looking to see where we can continue to advance and enhance the programming. Um, but we feel like the high school counselors have a really great, strong foundation. They all bring different skills to the table. Um, but we're also always open to new ideas and seeing, you know, where we could bring on more specialties, whether it's through a full-time staff member, whether it's through bringing other consultants in to be able to support through professional development for our staff. So, those are things that we're always open to. Summer school, you know, this is, uh, something that we talked about in our small-budget committee meetings. And, you know, this is something, um, that, as you all know, Fairlawn High School has a high graduation rate, and that is something that we are extremely proud of. Um, and that's something that is a testament to the commitment of, of obviously, our students and their parents and our educators at the high school. And I would say, it's not just the high school, it's pre-K to 12. We also have a number of students who, at times, will need to remediate, and that's where the summer school program is really important. Over the past several years, the district has been funding, uh, the summer school program for our students, uh, since COVID. And our default pref, preferred approach is going to be through in-person summer school teaching in the high school. This was paid for through our ESAR funds, so this is one of those items that has kind of rolled off. And the reason we're including it in there is because our concern would be as if we're not funding it. Um, there is a likelihood and a possibility that some students will not enroll in summer school because of the cost. Because of that cost, that would impact their schedule in the following school year because there are only, only so many time slots within their schedule in order to be able to fit their courses, in order to be able to graduate on time. So, the concern from myself as superintendent, from our central office team, from our building administration is that if we're not funding it, we do run the risk of more students not graduating on time. The concern with that, it would of course be not only those students', um, ability to move on post-secondary, but it also would be affecting the high school graduation rate, the perception around the high school with having a lower graduation rate, and ultimately, the perception in the community. So, that's important to note. I would also note, while it's, it's a cost, it's a $70,000 cost approximately, it is only for the core-subject graduation requirement areas. Um, and when you look at the cost and we put students in the classroom, it's about three hours and 25 minutes, three hours and a, three and a half hours a day over the course of about four weeks. And they're able to catch up, make sure that they're moving on to their subsequent advanced course the following year. So, relative to a $138 million budget, $70,000 is a nominal amount. I think, as a school district, we're getting a lot more in return by making that important investment. And I will just also juxtapose that number of $70,000, alternatively, with the after-school enrichment program that we provide at approximately $65,000, and that's outside of the school hours. That does not contribute towards graduation rate. So, I think those are important areas to kind of keep in mind. I think they're both important. But I believe that it's a good investment in our resources. As far as, there was a, a comment that was made regarding our property. Uh, that's certainly something that the school district can always explore. Um, I think the appropriate conversation for that would be through our facilities and B&amp;G committees and finance committee. Uh, one of the things that I would, of course, always caution is, you know, how could we, as a school district, more long-term, utilize the property that we have? I've heard of some horror stories in some communities where they've actually sold off property and schools, and then years later, you're in a position where you need to build or transfer some buildings or create parking lots or, you know, add-on, and then it becomes much more costly. We see what things cost today versus, you know, even five or 10 years ago. So, it's just something to consider. I, I certainly think it's a, a conversation that the board should, should have. And I think, as far as I can see, that addresses all the questions on our end. I don't know if there's anything else, uh, that Danielle, you have? Okay.
This portion of our board meeting is specifically for comments on any matter. When speaking, please state your name and municipality of residence, limit your remarks to three minutes. State law prohibits board members and administrators from discussing personnel matters, student discipline, or other confidential issues. Please note that this is not a dialogue or Q&amp;A session between speakers and the board. While we may not respond immediately or to every comment made tonight, all input is carefully considered and helps inform our decisions. Responses may come through emails, reports, board statements, website updates, or after the comment period closes. Thank you for your participation in our school community's government, governance. The floor is open. Anything on the Google Doc?
There are none.
Okay. Going once? Floor is closed. I will now open the floor to agenda, uh, to board comments on other business. Ms. Yerman.
So, all I would, um, I'm concerned about is, and it was in the budget, but I didn't, I'm not relating it to the budget, but what is a banked cap? And then what is determined to financially fund a banked cap? That's it. Thank you.
Ms. Favelich.
I only have one question. Oh, Ms. Beatty said that we have $32 million in reserve. My question is, can we pull some of the money out and increase our budget from 3% to 2%? Thank you.
I just want to clarify, are you want us to decrease from 3% to 2%?
Offset, I can go from 3% to 2%, which we have done for the past couple of years. We've been always 2%, I think, before the bank cap.
Ms. Brown.
Um, I just wanted to thank all of the schools that allowed me to come to them last week for Read Across America. Um, I didn't eat any lunch, so I thank you for that, and as do my clothes. And, um, I just wanted to thank Warren Point, Edison, Forest, Milns, and Westmoreland for, uh, inviting us to, uh, come and read to the students. It was the best part of my day. And I also wanted to thank everybody who sent, um, thank-you letters, all the students who signed thank-you letters. They're so cute, and I'm going to frame them and keep them forever. So, I just really appreciated everything, um, that all of the schools did for Read Across America and for including us and, um, keep inviting us because I'll keep coming during my lunch, absolutely. So, I just wanted to thank you guys.
Dr. Bertolini.
I would just be in favor of a joint, uh, payment between the students and the district for summer school. We'll talk about it again at another meeting, so, thank you.
Mr. Santana.
I just, literally just sent an email to, um, the chair of the, uh, finance committee so they can discuss the sale of the, uh, school board land, empty, empty lot, which is located one block away from the high school, for discussion. We have money sitting on our hands, and we have taxes going up, which is, is not, is not fiscally responsible, in my opinion, as a board member. So, I think we should, at the very least, uh, see what we can get for that piece of land that is not benefiting anyone right now, but just, it's an empty lot, uh, and see how we can, um, uh, bring some relief to the taxpayers. I, I, I will offer an alternative to what I propose. I propose that we charge, uh, our students for attending summer school so they have some skin in the game and some, um, motivation not to fail, to work harder, right? But, uh, in, in the spirit of equity, like, the, the president stated, I think it would be fair if we can make it free for students who are, um, who qualify for free lunch, and those who are, uh, who qualify for reduced lunch, uh, have them pay a certain percentage. And then those who don't qualify for free or reduced lunch should pay a cost, at cost, alright? Because we cannot be the school district for everyone. We have limitations. The, the taxpayers do not have limitless, uh, pockets. The homes are not ATM machines. People right now are struggling, people are struggling. But, I, I am not interested in nick, nickel and diming our children. I don't want to take one, a penny out of the classroom, but we have to make some tough decisions. We have many, uh, board members, we, the board have changed. We have to make some tough decisions moving forward. We have to make some tough decision moving forward. And if, if Ridgewood has more wealth than Fairlawn, we shouldn't be pay, we shouldn't be spending more per people than a wealthier community. That means we have to find more savings. We have to find greater savings. And again, like I said, the superintendent, Hestine, had made miracles for us to get to just 1.81 increase, given all the costs that we have had due to the enrollment. People literally knocking down a, a small, little ti, tiny cape-cott and putting a huge four-bedroom, three-bath home. There are consequences for that. So, you know, there's gonna be an increase, but this board is working very hard to make sure that we offset whatever we can offset. But we have to educate all the children, and they're entitled to a thorough and efficient education. Thank you.
Ms. Uh, Yerman.
I'm gonna piggyback on what Dr. Bertolini and Mr. Santana said about, um, the summer school. Some, the kids, the kids have to have some skin in the game as far as, um, some type of cost share. I'm not gonna, you know, I leave that up to the administration to determine that cost share, but there should be some. And to take into consideration free and reduced lunch kids as well. It's understandably, if you're in that, in, in free and reduced lunch, that everything would be proportionally according to, um, whatever the administration sets. Thank you.
Ms. Favelich.
I just want to clarify, it's 3% increase, right? Because I just wanted to make sure that I understand it correctly. And the next thing is, I want to say, Mr. Dineshio stated, uh, compared the summer school to the after-school enrichment program. I just want to also state that the after-school enrichment programs are not free. Parents pay 50% in order to be, so it's not like completely free. And the Fairlawn High School, summer school is completely free. So, I just want to make sure that, I want to make sure that it is, if I miss, misspoke, please correct me. Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Santana, just, um, we did receive your email. Please note, there are deed restrictions on that land. We will certainly talk about it during Buildings and Grounds when we get to it, but there are very specific deed restrictions on that land. During the finance of Buildings and Grounds. There was one other thing I could answer before I turn it over to all of you. Oh, and then just in regards to what the district put up in regards to the cost of students, please keep in mind, those are averages. We have one of the largest, most well-known special education populations, not only in the area, but in the state. People come here for what our district has to offer, and the cost of what students who receive certain services, those individual costs are much higher. And, um, for those of us that have looked at the draft of Monday's meeting, you will be able to review those numbers so you have a better sense of why it may be higher or lower. But, um, that is an average per student and doesn't take into consideration, um, the needs of each individual child.
And just to clarify, on the per-pupil cost, we receive, I can probably say this right off the cuff, more state aid than Ridgewood due to our demographic needs. So, we have a vastly diff- So we have a vastly different demographic than Ridgewood does. So per-pupil cost doesn't only include what we're raising in taxes, it also includes what we receive in state aid. So a lot of times, if you have, it just depends, right, on what your diversity is and how much state aid you are getting, but that number can appear, I don't want to say artificial, but it is kind of artificially, right, because it is including state aid as well.
I, in a moment, I'm going to ask Ms. Mancuso, I just want to talk about a couple of items, but I'm going to ask Ms. Mancuso to just kind of give a little color to the banked cap question, kind of explain what that means a little bit. I recommend that we, on the summer school cost share, a couple of board members have brought that up. It's a recommendation in the budget, but I think as far as discussing cost share, we should bring that back to the Education and the Finance Committee and have further discussion there moving forward. And to the point about the after-school enrichment, I made the analogy because of the similar cost of what the district is paying. Yes, the parents do pay half of a portion, but whether or not we do after-school enrichment doesn't impact our high school graduation rate and the perception of the high school, the community, and the potential impact on the real estate and the value of living in the community. So I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware of more long-term impact there. Ms. Mancuso, can you just elaborate a little bit on what bank cap is, how it could be utilized, how we actually arrive at getting that number?
Sure. So, for bank cap eligibility, basically what that means is, last year, we didn't utilize our entire 2%. So anytime you only raise taxes, let's say we only raised them 1%, then we would have 1% that moves over to bank cap. So that's basically like a savings account that you can use, well, you have three years to use it, and then it expires. So, and it's based on when you accrued it. So for example, I just want to go back to the slide, but let's say we generated $1.8 million in '23, '24. So we only have three years to use that before it expires and it just disappears. The benefit of using bank cap is that once you take that money and you increase your tax levy, it's increased forever. So if you increase it by a million dollars, then next year, I'll get 2% on the new increased levy. So if our tax levy is $100 million, and I increase it by using bank cap to $101 million, next year, when the software calculates my 2% in the state software, I get the benefit of that additional $1 million. You asked a question, just kind of from a financial standpoint, why would we use that? When would we use that? I think that's really what we do as an administrative team, right? We look at the district needs, we looked at what our priorities are, we had small-budget meetings with all of the board members to kind of get an understanding of what the community feels is an acceptable tax increase, and, you know, we would definitely have to take that into consideration. Obviously, if you used $3 million in one year, that would be a substantial increase on the taxpayer. So you kind of want to, it also wouldn't be my financial recommendation, because we want to make sure that we're able to kind of close the gap for future years pending those state aid numbers, which this year, we saw a decrease, unfortunately. I don't see that getting any better in future years.
Yes, and I think, just to add to that great explanation, imagine you have two levers, right? It's, you know, you have your expenses and you have your revenues. So, if we were going to want to increase the revenue side, which is that bank cap, that would be because there are specific needs within the school district that we want to accomplish, right? So if we wanted to, hypothetically speaking, expand ICR in-class support resource for special education in nine through 12 in one given year, that's going to cost a lot more money than what we've proposed with a phase-in. As a result, there's only two ways to get there. Increase the revenue, right? So take advantage of bank cap, or go cut something else. And when you're cutting, most of the funding, the capital that you're looking at in a budget, about 70, 72%, comes from people, right? We're in a people business. So it's salaries, it's benefits, it's people in front of students, it's people taking care of our buildings, it's people administrating and coordinating, it's people. So, that's the way to kind of look at it. So that would be an example, Ms. Yerman, of when we want to do certain things, if we have a very difficult year, because let's say, instead of getting a $700,000 cut in state aid, it was $1.5 million, now we have to come up with another $800,000. Does that mean we have to actually go cut $800,000? Does that mean we don't add an additional $800,000? Or does that mean we're going to increase revenues with the bank cap and take advantage of that for $800,000? So, those are all of the factors that go into kind of building and balancing the budget that gets us to this point.
I just wanted to go back to Ms. Vavalevich, her question on the 2% and 3%.
Sure.
So just to answer the question, if we would be able to take our capital reserve funds and reduce the 3% proposed increase, you can only use capital reserve funds to decrease your debt service levy. You cannot use it for general fund operations. It also would not be my recommendation to do that, because you are going to see a facilities audit that has a very large amount of infrastructure needs to our district. So, you know, being able to, the district has done an incredible job of building that capital reserve over time. We know that we are going to be discussing our demographic study, we're going to be discussing this district facilities assessment that we're going to be, Dr. Genicio, are going to be presenting at in May at our, or June at the state of the schools. So, you really want to make sure that whatever decrease you're providing is sustainable. And if you're taking it from the capital reserve, that would not be sustainable to lower your debt that much and then have insufficient funds for the capital projects that we need. And I think the last question was just on the tax increase, the 3%. So, it is kind of confusing. The 3% is just on our tax levy, general fund tax levy. So that's different than the tax impact. So when we are calculating our tax impact, we actually are taking, I'm going to try not to get too in the weeds on this, we take half of our levy from one year and half of our levy from this year. And then, that amount is divided by our total assessed value of the borough or the ratables, and then we multiply that by the average assessed home. So that's where, when you get to this point, you're going to see that 1.60% tax increase or the 122, but that's, the actual tax levy is increasing on the school year, the 3%. But I'm happy to spend more time with you at another time to go through it even, even more. And we can talk about maybe how to present that a little more clearly next year.
I closed the floor after Ms. Vavalevich spoke, because nobody else had their hand up. You didn't. Can I get a straw poll, if everyone's okay with Mr. Santana speaking? Hand up if you're okay with it. Okay, Mr. Santana, I'll give you three minutes.
Thank you. I'll keep it brief. I have a question. The after-school enrichment, is that, is that enrichment in a sense of remediate work for students? Or is that extracurricular enrichment? What percentage of, what percentage are the parents who are paying paying? Are they paying a cost, 100%? Or they're paying 70%?
It's not a discussion, finish your statements, and I will answer.
Because I believe, I believe, you know, our priority is the regular school day, right, when it comes to the increase. And I think we can offset the cost by making sure that those who are able to pay, pay the, pay a cost, the after-school enrichment. Now, for, in terms of equity, again, like the summer school, what I propose, that we, those who qualify for free and reduced lunch get a special rate, free, you know? But if these are like, not math remediation or language R or anything that impacted their, you know, the quality of their education, but if it's just extra stuff that they want to do after school, then, you know, the parents should pay. In this community, many, many parents have their children in extracurricular activities, I know I did, three, four a week. Many, many people do that. It's normal. And people pay, private tutors, you name it. So, I don't think people will have a problem with it unless it affects their ability of them to pay, such as those who may qualify for free and reduced lunch. But again, like I have said before, we cannot be the school district for everyone. We have limitations. We are lucky the increase is what it is, thanks to the hard work of the superintendent, the business office, and central office. But, again, there is a lot we can still do by using some creative thinking and making tough decisions. Thank you.
Our, guys, I close, I'm going to be honest, I closed the floor, that was our policy.
I just wanted a point of clarification.
Go ahead.
And you can answer it or not, you know, not answer it. So, I understand, I somewhat understand the bank cap, and we can talk about it after, but on one of the slides, it said that there was an amount, and I don't remember what it was, that expired, and I just, that's what I don't, that's the part I don't understand.
So, every, every year, there's an amount that rolls off, because it could only be carried over for three years, right? So, every year, you have, from three years ago, an amount that has expired. So it's really on a three-year rotation. So it just depends on what happened three years ago or four years ago. And, but once that time passes, you can no longer utilize that. So that's an, it's an important number to keep in mind, right? Because it is, as Ms. Mancuso had shared, not taxing the community member, the taxpayer, up to the 2%. So that difference between, let's say if you went up 1% versus 2%, that 1% difference, you get to bank for future years in the event that you need it. You're welcome.
Our after-school enrichment is extracurricular, and currently, the cost is split between the family and the district. That's it. Give me a second. Our upcoming meetings for the foreseeable future include our regular monthly meeting, which is also our preliminary budget adoption here on March 18th. That is a Tuesday, that is an atypical date for our calendar due to the State of New Jersey Department of Education budget deadline, taking place here at Edison School, Eugene and Banta, Room 19, at 7:30 PM. And then on April 24th, again, our regular monthly meeting. It's also our public hearing and final adoption, budget adoption at 7:30 PM. Thomas Edison School, Eugene and Banta Public Meeting Room, Room 19. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Second. Anthony got the second, and Ed got the so moved. Have a good night. Happy Purim.